Calling to order a special meeting for Diamond Lake School District Seventy-Six. Roll call, please.
Ms. Angorola? Ms. Bayless? Here, Mr. Becker? Ms. Hale?
Here.
Mr. Houghton?
Here.
Mr. Candela?
Here.
Ms. Sullivan? Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we now open the floor for public comments on agenda items. Do we have any public comments on our special meeting agenda? Okay, there being no public comments. We are, just for everyone that's joining us tonight, it is the meeting where we kind of recognize our outgoing board members and seat our new incoming board members. So you're gonna see kind of a little bit of business reorganization and then we will move on to our exciting presentations. We appreciate your patience. But the first thing that we have up is to recognize Mr. Dave Candela. And so for those of you who don't know, Dave joined us in June of 2017. He applied on to fill a vacancy that we had on the board at the time. And I distinctly remember interviewing Dave. You know, one of our standard questions is asking the board members or the prospective board members, why are you interested in doing this? Why are you interested in becoming part of the board? And his response is something that I'll always remember because he talked about how, as an educator, both he and his wife are educators and how they had given a lot to their own districts where they worked and they had spent a lot of time there and they thought that, you know, it was time to give back to the district where they lived and where their kids were going to school. And so I really think that he has done a tremendous amount to give back to the district. During his six years on the board, the district successfully passed a referendum. That referendum resulted in no tax increase to our taxpayers, but it was also able to significantly overhaul the building. So for those of you that have been in the district in a while, you can see everything looks remarkably different. The building that we're in right now, this whole Sparkle Center is something that was new and came, you know, as a result of that money. So that really transformed the district for our students and our staff. During those six years also, we saw the climate and culture of the district change. We negotiated a new contract with our teachers. We dealt with a global pandemic where we pivoted to remote learning and learned how to teach our students and support the community. And then we transitioned back. So we transitioned back from remote learning to hybrid learning, then back to in-person learning, learning how to adapt not only to teaching and being back in classroom, but also how to support our students and families. On top of that, we also had to learn how to deal with various health resources, deal with various cleaning protocols, and really be kind of jacks-of-all-trade. Also during this time, the board has been recognized for our work with board and superintendent relationships. The district has been recognized for its LCL programming, for the outstanding programming at West Oak Middle School, and for our district communications. These are really just kind of a few of the highlights, but they are, I feel like, really significant things that have happened over the last six years. Dave, I just wanted to say that you provided invaluable support and guidance to the district over these last six years. I know that I speak on behalf of the entire board when I thank you for the countless hours of service you've devoted to our district. We've learned so much from your insightful comments and your questions. And personally, I will always be grateful for the guidance you've provided to me in your role as Vice President as we've navigated various challenges over the last four years. And you will be greatly missed. So I know you're gonna enjoy your free time, but thank you so much for all the time that you've spent on the board.
I'm not sure what more I can add to the wonderful things that Mrs. Hale, our Board President, has shared with you about the amazing contributions, efforts, and highlights on the board, Mr. Candela. I do know that without your dedication, passion, and service to District Seventy-Six Board of Education, as a district, we would not be the spectacular, brilliant, and rare diamond that we are. And I personally would not be where I am today without your support, faith, and encouragement on my leadership journey. On behalf of the District Seventy-Six Leadership Team, staff, community, and most importantly, our students, we thank you. Personally, I met Mr. Candela seven years ago when he was picking up his daughter Eden, who was in kindergarten at Fairhaven School. We struck up a conversation in the office and he shared he was a teacher in a nearby district. I had shared that we were looking for board members to run in the spring elections and I thought he would make an excellent candidate. Apparently, he didn't think so because he didn't run. But we weren't letting him off that easy because when we had an opening later on that year, I reached out and asked him if he would consider being, applying and being interviewed. Well, he passed, as you heard from Mrs. Hale, with flying colors and memorable words and became a valuable voice as an educator, union leader, and a child advocate on the board. It is not always easy to give up your personal and professional time and dedicate yourself to help and support others. And at times, make decisions that put the needs of other people's children above your own. These sacrifices and services take conviction to do the right things that may not always be popular. They take a selfless spirit and a generous heart to give so much of yourself with the exception, excuse me, with the expectation of receiving nothing in return. Mr. Candela, you are a role model and inspiration for all of us here tonight and also throughout our community for your six years of volunteer service, unpaid, I would add, and participation at approximately 140 board meetings and 20 meetings with staff and attorneys, which were very glamorous during our teacher contract negotiations. Your commitment, your energy, and active engagement on the board has been instrumental in making a memorable difference and positive impact in the lives of over 2,000 children and families. Personally, Dave, your trust and confidence in me as an educator and your professional respect for me as superintendent is truly valued and appreciated and words cannot express my gratitude. I am grateful for your support of the district leadership team, your faith in our recommendations for new programs and processes, your trust in helping us lead through the pandemic, your pride as you shared your cul- as you shared our culture and climate story with your own district, even inviting them to the Back to School Gala a few years ago. And also for your endless energy to help us be the best we can be for District Seventy-Six students, staff, and our community. Your vision, your leadership, and your contributions have moved our district forward in a positive direction so we are now an award-winning and nationally-recognized district to watch and to work in. Thank you, Mr. Candela. You will be greatly missed and your legacy will not be forgotten. Sparkle on.
You are the first recipient. But it's quite sparkly.
Yeah.
No.
It's your very own Diamond Award.
Diamond Trophy.
You can read it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, I wasn't really expecting that, but thank you. And I wasn't planning on getting teary-eyed. But here I am. And again, thank you for the very, very kind words. You know, as I reflect on six years on the board and 30-plus years in public education, you know, my role is a bit part and it really is overshadowed by the work of everyone else here. I appreciate the support that I received as a new board member and the collaboration and partnership of Bobna, our whole administrative staff, our teaching staff, our support staff, and the parents of the community. You know, as a public education institution, we take all comers. There's no admissions test. There's no filter process. And it's our role, whether at the board level, the administrative level, or in the classrooms and the hallways, to do our best for, as the mission says, each child each day. You know, as board members, it's not about my child. It's about every child. And I know that my colleagues will continue the work that started before I got here in taking what was always a hidden gem in Diamond Lake School District Seventy-Six and continuing to polish it as everyone here has done over the last eight or more years and really brighten that sparkle and sparkle on. Thank you, guys, so much. I appreciate it.
And now we are excited to announce and welcome our new board member. This is Lori Scafidi. And we are going to go forward and administer the oath of office to her. So Lori, if you want to stand up. We can just do it right here unless you want to go to the podium. Okay, perfect. So I'm gonna move over. Mr. Becker, do you mind just?
You just trying to make a phone call? Okay. I state your name. Do solemnly affirm that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Education of Diamond Lake School District Seventy-Six in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability.
I, Lori Scafidi, do solemnly affirm that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Education of Diamond Lake School District Seventy-Six in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability.
I further affirm that.
I further affirm that.
I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I shall encourage and respect the free expression of my- of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can only be made by a majority vote at a public board meeting.
I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting.
I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district.
As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district.
I shall foster with the board expense extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for Diamond Lake School District Seventy-Six.
I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for Diamond Lake School District Seventy-Six.
I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework.
I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework.
I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law.
I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law.
I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision for Diamond Lake School District Seventy-Six and...
I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision for Diamond Lake School District Seventy-Six and...
I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district forward or toward fulfilling the vision the board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision of the board had- the board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and professional development.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
So we are gonna reorganize and then we will re-seat everybody.
Yes. So now... Be it resolved that the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves the appointment of the President and Secretary Pro Tem is listed below. Board President Pro Tem is Mrs. Joy Hale and Board Secretary Pro Tem is Mrs. Elisa Bayless. May I have a motion to approve, please? Yes.
Mr. Houghton?
Yes.
Okay, and now can I get a motion to adjourn CNA-DI? Yes. Hey. Now I'm calling to order the committee of the whole meeting for Diamond Lake School District Seventy-Six. Roll call, please. I'm sorry. You're fine.
Ms. Angorola? Ms. Bayless here for Professor. Ms. Hale?
Here.
Mr. Houghton?
Here.
Ms. Scafidi? Ms. Sullivan?
Okay, now we will move to reorganize the board. May I have a nomination for the Office of President, please?
I nominate Joy Hale for Office of President.
Mr. Becker.
Mr. Becker seconded.
Thank you. Do we have any other nominations? Okay, then can we get an all-in-favor vote? All in favor? Okay, thank you. Now, we're going to take nominations for the Office of Vice President. I nominate Nicole Sullivan. Do we have any other nominations? Sorry.
Speeding through.
Mr. Becker? Okay. There being no other nominations, can we get an all-in-favor vote?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. And now we will take nominations for the Office of Secretary. I nominate Elisa Bayless. Sorry. I butchered your name. Are there any other nominations? Okay, all in favor? Fantastic. Congratulations. We can kind of redo the seating. Nikki, if you want to move here and then Lori, you could move to where Nikki is sitting. Thank you. And the next thing that we have just under that is just a review of the 2023-2024 board meeting schedule. Did you want any discussion for that? There were a couple of challenges.
Yes, I was just gonna say that attached is, it was in last meeting's packet. There was a change for the July meeting due to a conflict schedule that I had. And then I also thought it would be beneficial for Ms. Scafidi to also review it and just check it because those are gonna be the dates effective July 1 through next June. And so they're all listed out. So if you could review and look at your personal calendars and your professional calendars and then we will be taking a vote on it at the next board meeting, which is May 16.
Fantastic. Okay, now moving on to public comments. Do we have any public comments on the rest of our agenda for this evening? I don't think so. I think everyone's ready for the presentations. Okay, there being no public comments, we will move on to presentations.
All right, we have two very exciting presentations this evening. The first one, would you like, I'm gonna actually ask Dr. Berger, would you like to do your student presentation first? Would you like to go and do the Diamond Award presentation? All right, perfect. So I am going to turn the floor over to Dr. Berger, who has two Diamond Award nominations that she and the Diamond Lake staff would like to present this evening. Dr. Berger?
You can bring your children, it's okay. We got everybody? Great. All right. Good evening, District Seventy-Six Board of Education. Thank you so much for having us tonight. On behalf of Diamond Lake School staff, we would like to honor our administrative assistants, Lupe Flores and Josh Somora. Lupe and Josh go above and beyond every single day. Their hard work and commitment keeps our front office running smoothly and creates a warm, welcoming environment for families. Always willing and wanting to help, they both come in early, stay late, and lend a helping hand any way they possibly can. From answering phones, which ring a lot, to translating to attending grade-level music concerts, to volunteering with our community cuddles group, to holding the tiny hands of a preschooler who might need help getting to their classroom, Lupe and Josh are an integral part of our building. Over the past two months, Lupe and Josh have also been assisting in the nurse's office, helping our students with a tummy ache or a skinned knee. They always know how to make our students feel better. We are convinced that some frequent visits to the nurse's office might be a secret request for a hug from whose students like to call Ms. Lupe and Mr. Josh. Lupe and Josh, thank you for your dedication, your sincere smiles, and most importantly, the pure joy and sparkle that you bring to our building. DLS is honored to have both of you as a part of our family.
Come up. Come up.
We love you, we love you. We love you.
Well, just on behalf of Ms. Flores and myself, we want to say a thank you to the Board of Education and to the Diamond Lake School District, to the teachers that we work with every day, to the parents, and to everybody that is involved on the day-to-day activities here at Diamond Lake School. Thank you, guys, so much for everything. We love being a part of the Diamond Lake family.
Lupe and Josh, before you leave, I know Mr. Hanson would like to take a picture of you. Thank you. You just let it know at the end? All right. Perfect. All right, and the floor continues to remain and the focus on Diamond Lake School. Who is, uh, they are gonna provide us with a learning update in what they have been to this past school year and most recently, the past few weeks, with some surprise guests.
All right, good evening, District Seventy-Six Board of Education, District Leadership Team, and of course, families and staff members. We're thrilled to have you here tonight for our presentation entitled Chick Sparkle. We've had a special unit going on for the last month or so that has to do with cross-curricular and cross-grade level embryology. So we've been doing this build- this unit throughout the entire building, all the way from little diamonds pre-K to second grade. So when we first started doing this, the purpose really was to be able to get our next-generation science standards happening throughout our entire building and find different ways to be able to have that vertical alignment from pre-K all the way up to second grade, looking at different ways that we can have students engaging in this unit, leading one another, and also having those peer interactions and conversations. So when we looked at the vertical alignment, we set essential questions for each grade level based on those standards that we see. So kindergarten, looking a lot at the question of how do chicks live, grow, and respond to their environment and reproduce. First grade, how do chicks communicate with one another? And second grade, talking about how does the development of chicks compare in an incubator to a farm? So that they were looking at different environments in which chicks can live. We also did a cross-curricular portion with this, looking at how this also relates to some social studies standards, such as looking at helpful resources when we're determining some of our research or gathering evidence and also some of our communicating conclusions so that we can talk about with guidance and support how students can share findings with one another and with their teachers and of course, in some different ways. What you see sitting on your tables and what you see also hanging from the edge of these tables are different ways that classes went about engaging in these projects. It happened in the general education classrooms as well as in our dual-language program as well. So what you're actually seeing here on the tables is some highlights from dual-language specifically and you'll see different highlights from our students as well in their presentation. We also had learning teams that allowed for the cross-grade level portions to happen. So each teacher that you see in red here was considered a teacher lead for each one of the different teams. And then the teachers listed underneath, those classes went to that teacher's classroom in red to be able to go and observe throughout the 21-day cycle and also engage with those other students as they were on the same learning team. One of the other pieces that we also had, aside from the cross-curricular studies within science and social studies, is that we were also able to open it up to be a cross-cultural experience through Mr. Kibler teaching our children the Spanish nursery rhyme, "Los Pollos." This is our first time that we've had pre-K joining us at our district presentation. So we are excited to start this tradition in years to come as well as we look at building-wide curriculum units as we go.
My name is Teresa.
Hi, Teresa. I hear you're here today to talk about the description of a chick. Do you remember what do chicks like, look like when they first hatch?
Yellow and white.
They're a little bit yellow and white? Yeah, absolutely. And what do chicks look like when they move into their chick hotel, as we like to call them here at Diamond Lake?
Water and food.
Sure, there's water and food there for them so they can stay and live. Great job, thank you so much. Go for it.
Hi, my name is Joel.
Hi, Joel. So can you tell us again, what do chicks actually sound like?
Up, up, up.
Yeah, it's those chirping sounds, absolutely. And what do they feel like when you hold them in your cupped hands?
Soft.
Soft, from all their... What makes them soft? All of their...
Fluff.
All their fluff, yes, absolutely. Thank you so much. No, Lennox, Lennox is next, remember? It's Lennox.
Hi, my name is Lennox Hernandez. I will be talking about-
I will be talking about the chick's life cycle. The hen lays eggs, then the hen puts them, the eggs in the nest, and incubates them, incubates the eggs, keeps them warm. The hen sits on them to keep them warm. The eggs hatch after 21 days, and then becomes chicks. Then, they grow up to be chickens.
Hello, I'm Josiah Sun. I'm here to do a Spanish lesson. Cueros means eggs, pochito means chicks, cachina means hen, gajos means rooster.
Don't walk away, don't walk away, Josiah. Josiah, you got another slide, remember?
Mi observación, si on this means something, we got to see, we saw the life cycle of the chicks.
Clearly, and I'm with you.
Hi, my name is Glendon Chain. All right. Chicks love to chirp and tweet. The mother chicken hen understands what they are. They want they want way to that. And they usually want water and food and to stay warm, and they also love corn. And they love to fly together, but the baby ones can't do that yet. Their, the eggs are different sizes and different colors, and the mother chicken lays different shapes of them.
My name is Blake Temple. When the mother hen lays the eggs, it might be one or two, maybe more. She takes care of the eggs like my mom takes care of me. This makes a family. The boy chickens are also helpful to the family. They are called roosters.
That's that, and your turn. My name is?
My name is Jonathan Suck. Sometimes the mom hen lives in a chicken house called a coop. Sometimes they live in a barn on a farm. Mama hens also protect her chicks by watching them, feeding them, and listening to them. She makes sure other animals stay away from her chicks unless it is the dad rooster.
Fine, awesome. Next one. Nice and clear, slow.
Hi, my name is Cosme Torres. The incubator does all the work instead of the mother hen. The incubator keeps them warm. The incubator also keeps them safe. On the farm, the mother hen also keeps the eggs warm and safe. At Diamond Lake School, we only used, with the incubators, we had fun. About 40 eggs hatch, you will meet the chicks later.
Hi, my name is Veronica Quebec. The unit also helped me have a creative mind. The sugar cookie chick. Once upon a time, there was an old lady who lived in a tiny house that made a yellow sugar cookie chick. Then she made a white sugar cookie bunny, and after the chick baked, the chick ran out of the house, and so did the sugar cookie bunny. The bunny wanted to eat the yellow sugar cookie chick. Then the yellow sugar cookie chick came across a cat, and the cat wanted to eat the yellow sugar cookie chick. So the cat needed to get rid of the cat and the white sugar cookie bunny. So the sugar cookie chick tricked the cat by saying, "I heard there is some lovely fish by the river." So the cat went to the river, but the cat didn't know that the yellow sugar cookie chick tricked him. Then he tricked the bunny by saying, "There are some lovely berries by the bushes over there." So the bunny went, but the bunny didn't know that the yellow sugar cookie chick tricked him. So then, the yellow sugar cookie chick ran as fast as he could, and he ran to the house and opened the door and shut it tight. And then, the grandma made the yellow sugar cookie chick a tiny house. The end.
Hold on to that, next one, nine. And of course, throughout this entire unit, there were an incredible amount of moments that matter and moments that sparkle. Please take a look at this incredible video. Let's take a seat, take a break and take a seat. We'll see. But it was just an incredible experience for all of us, and we thank you so much for allowing us to do this and to bring this new experience to our children. Mr. Kibler? Mr. Kibler, thank you so much for your support tonight with music and bringing across grade levels, across curriculum, and it's and across, across curriculum, across grade levels, and across subject. We absolutely loved it. Thank you so much. And thank you to this beautiful group of nine absolutely sparkly chicks who did an incredible job tonight. Take a bow.
Atlanta, it's reading. It's in They need to do a great job.
It's fantastic.
Got a picture?
Yeah, got a picture. Yeah, for one second. Oh my God. You guys, quickly, we just want to thank you so much for coming tonight and for showing us everything you learned. You did such a great job, and you were so brave to talk to us. Go play with your chicks.
And that concludes our presentations for this evening. Thank you.
Okay.
I don't think anyone's staying.
No. Okay, so that concludes our presentations for the evening. We are now going to move on to our business agenda. Item number one on the business agenda is our omnibus vote agenda, and that is for review this evening. The next item on our agenda is the personnel item, and that is up for action this evening. Okay? So be it resolved, the Diamond
So be it resolved, the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves the personnel items as depicted on the agenda. We have one maternity leave, one resignation, two new hires, and one internal transfer. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Okay.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Haltman?
Yes.
Ms. Angelola?
Yes.
Ms. Bayless?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Caffedy?
Yes.
That motion passes. The next item up for action on our business agenda is approving the Twenty Twenty-Three, Twenty Twenty-Four Consolidated District Plan. Be it resolved that the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves the Twenty Twenty-Three, Twenty Twenty-Four Consolidated District Plan as presented. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Second, Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Ms. Bayless? Yes. Ms. Angelola?
Yes.
Ms. Becker?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Haltman?
Yes.
Ms. Caffedy?
Okay, that motion is also approved. That concludes the business portion of our agenda. Moving on to board discussion. So for board discussion this evening, we have two things. We have the adoption of the math curriculum, which is a memo. I don't know if we want to talk anything. I don't know if anyone has any questions about it. We've had a number of presentations, and I think that it's probably been covered, but if anyone has any questions.
I have a real quick question. Can you turn the mic? I was just curious if, when are we rolling this out? And are we, is there any way to provide like an early access for students for like over the summer to kind of get used to the programming? Or I don't know how exactly it works, but?
So the material has actually just arrived today. So they'll be ready to go for the fall, and teachers have access. So Mr. Hans and I were just talking about how soon we can, we'll roster all of our kids from Power School. So it's just a matter of, do we do that before, after? We call promoting the kids to the next grade to be able to do that. So it, it works extremely well with Google. So hard copies we'll have available for those that are just being in Summer Academy. But digital access, I don't know for sure, because we literally just got the first contact. But in theory, yes, you can have access. And we have something called Success Maker, which is replacing Imagine Learning and Alex, which is their platform for that. So as soon as we upload students, everybody's active and live.
I also had a question. So these, excuse me. So Envision works well with the Chromebooks, and I don't remember, do the kids keep the Chromebooks over the summer? I can't remember if they do that or not. Okay, so they wanted access to?
Yeah, it wasn't, wouldn't be something we'd necessarily provide in that sense, because they also have, we have a ton of the current curriculum that anybody could, they can take as many books as they want in order to prepare, and that they will have access to that, and we'll send that home with kids over the summer. The content aligns extremely well. So kids will have, be able to have access to the next grade level without, like the actual text that we would have used, if that makes sense.
I'd like to just thank Mr. Haltman for serving on the CDO Executive Board. I know, I believe it's probably been at least four years since you've done it. It's right before the pandemic, right when Mr. Lozada stepped down.
Yeah.
But the CDO was going through a very critical time. Four years ago, I believe, right when the transition took place, when Mr. Lozada stepped off, stepped off, and you stepped on. So thank you for stepping up and representing District Seventy-Six, because I know it wasn't always peaceful to be at those meetings. But you did a really nice job, and we appreciate it. So thank you. Yes, exciting. Okay, there you go. Excitement.
It's a great way to put it. Okay, fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Becker, too. Okay, that kind of wraps up board discussion. We do not have any FOIA requests this evening. Moving on to notices and communications. We have a number of District Seventy-Six highlights. I don't know if you want to go through?
Sure. Sure. Alright, so yes, we have, well, you saw two big highlights today, which were the Diamond Awards for Lupe and Josh, as well as the tremendous job that the Diamond Lake students did with Dr. Berger's guidance, as well as the staff support. I think they did a phenomenal job. It was very much something that they were waiting to do. DLS loves to be on camera. They love to take pictures. They love to perform, and they love to showcase all the wonderful things that they're doing. So the first two videos are a, they did a kindness month, which was, I believe, last month. And so they shared gratitude for leadership, as you all know, because you were delivered with personal messages back in April. And so this, the first video is of them recognizing the district leadership team. And the second video is of them recognizing the administrative professionals on Administrative Professional Days, which was last month, or excuse me, last week. And then we also, as a district, recognized all of our administrative professionals with a notice of gratitude and appreciation. Our April newsletter, The Diamond Edge, which I know you all get a copy of, but we just wanted to put everything all together for you. Nicole Lynch, who was recently spotlighted in the IRC, which is at Illinois Resource Center Newsletter. She was nominated by one of her staff members here, Julie Pacararo, about the amazing thing she's doing with our English language learners. And then moment of the month was April. We recognize six outstanding students. You might recognize a few of them in that picture from the Illinois Principals Association for being stellar leaders and representatives of Diamond Lake. And then we finally have put the Sparkle Center all together. Believe it's been completed with the artwork, with the furniture, with all of the aesthetics. So we publicized that out just earlier this, I believe it was today, just to share with the staff, because I know there's some West Oak campus staff that don't get a chance to always come here and visit. So we wanted to share that out and share all those highlights with all of you. So as you can see, it's been a busy month. Thank you.
Fantastic. So nice to see so many positive things. Okay, moving on to public comments and petitions on non-agenda items. We have lost our audience. I do not think we have any. But do we have any public comments or petitions on non-agenda items this evening? Okay, moving on to others. And the only thing I have under others is just a reminder to take a look at the board calendar for the remainder of this year, and then going into next year. So you can see if you're not going to be available, and just to let me and Babna and Hiram know as soon as possible, so we can make sure we have forum. And then also, just to make sure that if you are not going to be available for the June eighth training, to let us know as well, because we want to make sure as many of us that can be there are. And that's all I had. Did anyone else have any others? No, it's, it's exactly the same as it would be during the school year. Same time, same place. Okay, we do not have executive session this evening. So could I get a motion to adjourn, please? Yes. Okay, that concludes our meeting. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.